Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Killenly's zoning board of appeals special meeting. Today is Thursday, September 19th, 2024. It is now seven o'clock. We're gonna start the meeting. I'm gonna start with a roll call vote. Lynn LaBerge?
Here.
Jared Pichi?
Here.
Andrew Farner?
Here.
And Will Mangi on cellphone?
Yep.
Bill?
Yep, Bill is by cellphone. And then we do have one other person. I'm guessing it's a member of the public?
It is Mark and Deidre Akey.
Oh, perfect. So it's one of our applicants. Perfect.
And then David Izzo is not here, but with notification. Article three, citizens' participation. Public comment can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the Town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239, on or before the meeting. All public comments received prior to 2:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be posted at the town's website, www.killenly.org. And you said there was no citizens' participation?
I received no comments for anything outside the meeting. Additionally, can be said for all of our public hearings tonight, I have received no outside comments tonight.
Onto the public hearings. Good evening. To participate in the public hearing, the public may join the meeting via WebEx or in person. Is that listed on Facebook?
Okay. Yeah, there's a link on Facebook to our agenda and packet. So if somebody wanted that direct link, they should be able to hopefully get it from there. Or it might be easier to use the phone number that is on that agenda as well.
Okay. We're gonna start with application 24-840 of Simon and Janet Murrow. Is it? To vary the borough of Daleston zoning regulations, 530.23, minimum side setback for a driveway from 10 feet to zero feet at 54 Mechanic Street, GIS map 181, lot 102, in an RHD zone. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here. If you don't mind, you can sit right here. In case they have any questions. So if you'd like, I'm gonna share just on the screen there, I will make it larger in a second, some photos. That's one of the main differences from last week's agenda between now and this special meeting. I did go out from the direction of the chair to try to snap some photos of just the areas in question that are for the variances, just to provide more context. There is in your packet, Mr. Chair, a staff report. If you'd like, I can read the summary.
Sure.
So for this application, the applicant would like to construct a new approximately 12-foot-wide driveway. And I say approximately 12-foot wide because that is the typical standard single-family or single-unit width driveway up to the side property line at 54 Mechanic Street. 54 Mechanic Street was constructed in 1900. The existing driveway is located on the opposite side, the southern side, which I do have a photo of. Take a second here. There we go. The existing driveway is located on the opposite side, the southern side of the property, and currently serves as the only parking area. The existing driveway is up to the side property line. Okay, yeah. The proposed driveway would allow each unit to have their own parking space to become more compliant with Section 530.1, minimum off-street parking, which requires two spaces per unit. I did reference Connecticut Public Act 2129, which does impact parking in all municipalities based off bedroom size. That does not impact this application, though. It still comes up to four spaces as the ideal number of spaces. The applicant has requested a waiver of an A2 survey, quite simply because the property lines are well-defined with iron pins.
Is there any distance of the driveway? How long it will be?
Typically, like, the distance going in would be between, like, 18 and 20 feet typically running in to the property to allow at least one full car, if not two cars, to stack. That's common. That detail usually gets worked out with our engineering.
Okay.
Our main concern is the side setback.
Which is already on the other side, zero, right?
Yes.
For that driveway? Okay. Do you have any questions?
On your application, you're supposed to list the zoning regulations that you wish to vary, and you listed the section for the zoning that you want to change the side setback. So what I'd like to know is what is your hardship for having to put the driveway there?
I'm sorry, do you mean for the new driveway or the existing?
The new driveway.
For the new driveway? Yes, so currently we have tenants living downstairs, and our, my family and I's work schedules and just routines do not really work well with our tenants, so we don't really want to interrupt with their schedules as they only have one car. We do actually have four or five cars, so it would be difficult to accommodate the tenants.
That still isn't a hardship according to? It would have to be something about the property? And why you want, you know, to change it from 10 feet to zero for your setback?
Not sure what that means.
So the house being built in 1900, it's kind of built in a timeframe that's prior to most automobiles, and definitely prior to the borough's zoning regulations, which came in in the 1960s. So I think what the applicant is looking for is trying to make the best with the existing configuration of the property.
And it's also a requirement, right, for two cars for each?
Ideally, if we were looking at brand-new construction, for each residential unit, it would be two parking spaces off-street, so on the property or on a budding property, because joint parking can be allowed in certain scenarios, like, or communal parking a lot.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are you the purchaser of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And you bought it as a rental property? Two separate units is when you purchased it?
Yes, it's two separate units, but we also live there, my family and I.
Sure, but when you purchased it, there was already two separate units? You didn't turn it into a multi-family house?
Oh, no, it was already, yeah.
Okay.
Bill, I know you're on the phone. Do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, do I have a motion to close?
Just in general, just make sure that there's no one else here.
Okay.
That wants to speak for or against?
Or on the phone?
Or on the phone, for or against the application, if anyone has any comments or questions even on the application. I don't see anyone.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing and application 24-840.
I'll second.
If you wanted to take a seat, we'll be back. We'll open it up after we get done our rest of our meeting. Do we do a roll call?
Yeah, yes, if we could.
Our secretary?
Yeah, so Joanne is coming off a different meeting before here, so I will do your roll call vote if you'd like. So Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Bill Mangi?
Yes.
Lynn LaBerge?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
The motion passes. So that's just to close the public hearing.
Now, we're gonna open up application 24841, Mark and Natalie Akey, to vary the Town of Killenly zoning regulations, 450 dimensional requirement, table A, minimum side setback from 25 feet to four and a half feet for a 24-by-24 detached garage, 107 Shippey Schoolhouse Road, on the GIS map 190, lot 4, in an RD zone. The applicant is on the phone?
Yes, so the applicant has joined us by WebEx. And please bear with me, because the smaller computer here tends to struggle. I will get some photos up that I was able to take also of the subject property. This property, so everyone is aware, did have, one of the public hearing signs get stolen off of the property or go missing. That was identified this week by the applicant. They reached out to staff, and we were able to replace it the same day. There is a staff report that is part of the packet to the zoning board. If you'd like, I can go through the summary.
Sure.
So the applicant would like to construct a 24-by-24 detached garage at 107 Shippey Schoolhouse Road, which was constructed in 1987. The existing home has a one-car pull-under garage, according to Town of Killenly's assessor's records, which is verified here in a photo. There you go. The applicant has supplied to the board a survey from J&amp;D Engineering that's part of the packet. I believe I have some hard copies of it. That might be a little bit larger, if the chair would like that. And while I get that, if the applicant has anything to add, feel free.
No, it doesn't seem like we have any additional ads at the moment. Just looking to add this 24 by 24 detached garage to the property, looking for the variance. Specifically due to the property location, not able to put this anywhere on the front of the home and/or behind the house based upon where the septic is located. In the front of the house, we can't do to the well location. So where we're asking to place it requires the variance.
I'll pull up the survey too, so everyone here can see it.
So I do have a question. From the assessor's card?
Yeah.
It looks like you just have a wooden deck. But from the other map that we got showing where you want to put the garage, it looks like the deck extends along a good part of the back of the house, which is up on the screen now. So I'd like to know why there's a discrepancy between the two.
I, it's a really good question. It looks like that was, the initial photos were back when I first purchased the home. That deck that was initially there, we did have to repair it, and the deck that is there now was just a repair from the initial deck that was initially on the home.
Do you know what year approximately you did the repair and extension of that deck?
It was 2018.
Okay. So effectively, it would be grandfathered in, whether it was permitted or not?
Okay, so I was gonna say, because I see that there wasn't a permit for. Thank you. I do have another question. Does the garage have to be 24-wide?
Well, we're asking for 24-by-24 for the purpose of, my husband does have a full-size truck, and we also like to put into that garage our snow removal, lift-off, snow blower, and things of that sort for the wintertime for easier access. So that 24-by-24 is what we've had come up with for the length side. We could go a little bit smaller. But this 24-by-24 is what we have requested at this point.
Okay, thank you.
The location of that detached garage, is it placed there because of the distance from that septic tank in Leach Field, or could it go more southern into the property?
Um, just one more, so they're going to drop you. We just had it cleared out last year, just to see what we had. And, yeah, we could go back straight, is that Jonathan that's speaking with?
Yep, this is John. Yep, I should, I'm sorry.
When you walk down the driveway, you notice that clearing out, I'm sure, to the right?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, I could go back a little farther there.
That would be behind the solar panel.
Yeah, the question is? Yeah, south towards your backyard, behind, towards the house. Yeah.
Yeah. But we, yeah, so we could not, well, you got the solar panels that are there as well, but if you go further south the other way, we do have the septic and the leach field. So we could not build over that.
Bill, I know you're on the phone. Do you have any questions?
No. No, I don't believe so.
Jared, do you have anything?
I, this might be a question for John.
Yep.
The driveway is already in the setback?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, obviously, it's allowed or it's grandfathered in.
Yes.
But does that create a peculiarity to where, I mean, it makes sense to have your garage at the end of your driveway.
It exists. It is there. It definitely does not meet, like, the subject of the last application. It does not appear to meet the 10-foot side setback. Although, this is in a different zone, but it would be the same 10-foot side setback.
Okay.
Again, that would be effectively grandfathered in. There's no evidence that it's a new driveway, or it was constructed there recently.
Sure.
The, yes, I mean, the driveway is where the driveway is. The applicant is also claiming hardship due to the physical restraints of the, you know, where the septic, leach, and well are. But I leave that to the board, whether or not you would consider that. I mean, it is a factor in a condition of the site, that you do have a non-conformity in terms of the location of that driveway.
Okay. Any other comment from the applicant?
No, thank you for, thank you for hearing us today.
Any public comment from anybody?
Don't believe we have anyone else on the phone? Anyone here have any comment?
Just curious, is there any way you could compromise?
If you could go up to the podium, just say your name and address?
I'm the neighbor.
Oh, yep. Yeah, it doesn't matter. Yeah, you can go right there.
I hate this process because it sort of pits neighbor against neighbor.
Yeah, name and address.
Yeah, Joseph Messina.
Okay.
113 Shippey Schoolhouse Road.
So you're on the septic?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're right there on the side.
My only concern is it's very close, so it's one-fifth of the setback. So maybe there could be a compromise. And I don't want to, they're good neighbors, they're very good people, but I, you know, if you own the property, you might feel the same way.
Understood. Appreciate that comment. Thank you.
So can this kind of move back a bit?
They're saying that it's too close to the septic, or we should move it a little closer to it. Well, it is 24, and this is only 25 feet. Right.
If you guys, any comments, just try to get them on the mic, so everyone can hear.
We were just checking something on the map. Do we have a motion to close? Application?
Bill?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close application 24-841.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Jonathan?
Yep. Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynn LaBerge?
Yes.
Bill Mangi?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
The motion passes. This is just to close the public hearing.
We're gonna move on to application 24842, William Casey, to vary the Town of Killenly zoning regulations, 450 dimensional requirements, table A, minimum side setback from 20 feet to five feet for a 20-by-32 addition, an in-law apartment at 58 Pleasant View Drive, GIS map 54, lot 22, in an LD zone.
We do have the applicant here. Like, Bill? Thank you. And I'm gonna, oop, I'm hitting the wrong button. I'll share some photos as well. Commission had asked, let's just open the placard that was visible from the street. Okay. So in your packet, there is also a staff report for the subject property. If you'd like, Mr. Chair, I can quickly summarize.
Sure. Thank you, Jonathan.
Yep, the applicant would like to construct a 20-by-32 addition for an in-law apartment, also known as a secondary dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling unit. 58 Pleasant View Drive was constructed in 1983. The current use of the property is a single-family home. The property contains an area reserved for open space, approximately 1.8 acres to the north. And the proposed secondary dwelling unit would be approximately 640 square feet with the maximal allowed under the zoning regulation of Section 566 as being 1,000 for an attached unit. The, it does say, the applicant requests a waiver of an A2 survey. There is a survey as part of the application, it's just not depicting the proposed structure. Staff did include, and so did the applicant, GIS maps, butters lists, deeds as part of your packet. And, Bill, if you want to go through the project, or if I missed anything?
It's basically just to house my elderly kind of handicap mom. It's fortunately left to me. I just, she's got really nowhere to go, and I've got nowhere else to kind of stick her, so I was gonna try to establish something there.
Okay, I have the same question for you as I did before. The hardship should be, according to our zoning regulations 800, and you didn't explain why it has to go there to assist your elderly parents, isn't a hardship by our regulations? So why does it have to be?
My mother living with me is a hardship, but it's the only real spot on the property that's gonna be handicap accessible. So everywhere else on the property, it's like, would be too much for them to access any portion of the, anywhere I could put it.
Is there an incline, or?
Right there, it would be perfect for them to go right in the front. Around the back, it would just interfere with my patio and everything else that's back there, and they would not be able to, and I'd have to have a step down into it. And this, I would be able to go right in, and the stairs, I wouldn't need to do stairs or any of that kind of stuff, so they would be able to just go right in, and they'd have their own level. You know, they wouldn't have to access it from stairs or anything like that.
And John, is there any other property in the area that's only five feet, that has a five-foot setback?
There have been other properties allotted variances in that same subdivision for side setbacks. The lot itself is generally considered conforming when we look at the width, but that has been a trend in that same subdivision. So we've had two, I believe, in the last calendar year or so, in that same subdivision. I'd have to pull up a GIS map to look at the district as a whole, which, if you'd like, I can pull up.
Do you happen to know what peculiarities were conditional to those properties and why the variance was granted?
Each variance is different, and each variance should be looked at independently for the property in question. Most of them, it was a desire to enlarge the property typically, because at least, I think two of them were related to garages. One was a garage with, actually, both, I believe, were garages with living space above. Two, you know, growing families, I think the subdivision as a whole was, at the time, almost like starter homes for a lot of families, and a lot of families have grown into them. Not necessarily a hardship, per se, but just a reality of that subdivision. I can bring up the GIS map if you'd like. That might help. Just bear with me. There is obviously a GIS map as part of the packet and the application, but it is focused particularly on the subject property, but we can look at the greater zone. Let's see if we can share it here.
Here's what Lynn was kind of getting at, as far as the, were you about to go? I'm sorry.
No, I'm gonna make it larger for everyone.
As far as the list of, you know, 800.2, .1A through D, what specifically is peculiar to your property? Because here's what the problem is, we're instructed to vote no unless you can demonstrate that, and it can't arise through the actions of the applicant. See what I'm saying?
No.
It's gotta, there's gotta be some, there's gotta be some condition that makes, about your property, that makes it specifically, like, you have to break the zoning laws in order to go through?
Well, I guess all I could say is there's no other place to put it.
Was the property in the condition that it's in right now when you bought it?
I've done, I've lived there for like 26 years, so I think I've done quite a bit there.
Right. So I saw there was a 20-by-20 garage, a 20-by-24 garage.
Yeah.
So I would say part of the reason that there's no other place to put it is because you kind of built yourself into that.
Yeah. And I had no idea that I would be in this position to have to house my mother at some point there as well. But even I've thought about turning the garage into something, into But even I've thought about turning the garage into something and to get anything tied into the house with water and sewage and all that stuff would be nearly impossible. And there's so much rock there and ledge in that area. The only spot that I could think to dig would be that area that I'm proposing.
So I do have the GIS map up. When we look at the intention of a variance, and I know this is something that's touched upon, like in some of the trainings we've done, the Connecticut Bar trainings. We look at the district as a whole, particularly contiguous, right? So low-density zone is everywhere that is yellow, right? So it is a very large zone and encompasses this whole subdivision here. So if, if the question being, are there other properties that have structures as close to the side property line? We would have to look in, in this area. Now, let me make sure we have the, one of the more recent images, if possible. So you're, you're looking at different properties here on the same street. 46, then of course there's tree cover. 46 Pleasant was, was one of the ones that we did grant a, a side variance. I believe it was a four-foot side variance. Most of the houses in the area are all similarly located, I would say, on, on the properties with varying levels of development. And, you know, the subject property being this property right here, 58 Pleasant View and the side area that the applicant is looking to develop.
Yeah, cause it looks like maybe some of the other driveways too that go in are close.
Yeah. Bill, your property essentially has two driveways, right? One on the right, one on the left.
One main driveway, but the other one's more of just an access to get to that side of the house to.
Like firewood and?
Yeah, stuff like that to get, get into the basement or whatever.
Okay.
Which I would eventually most likely make that area a driveway for them.
Switching. I'm just going to switch back over to the photos real quick. Switching back over to the photo. This pad area here, how long has that been there?
I mean, since day one, basically since I bought the place. I did the retaining wall to keep the water from the neighbor's yard from blowing into my side of my house. Other than that, I've made some repairs to that patio that's there. So I mean, that patio could, you know, that's why, that's the spot. Patio needs to be repaired anyway, so it's like.
In your, your proposed addition, is it going past the wall, this sidewall?
I think if you can, I don't know if you can zoom in, I did put a string up there.
Yep.
I think you did get the.
Yeah, I can.
Right where that drain pipe kind of comes out, there's a string there that.
This string right here?
Yeah.
Yep. So that string is the proposed extent of, of the addition?
Yeah.
And then your property line is up, up five feet?
This, yeah, to the, to the right of that picture. And I, you know, I almost think it's a little bit more than that based on, I ran a couple of string lines out there just to exactly see where it is. But since you went and took the pictures, I usually cut the grass perfectly to the neighbor's line.
Yep.
So there's no, you know, and also to show the neighbor exactly what is going on. You know, and I've proposed it to the neighbor and she didn't understand it at first, but now she understands and she's fine with it. And I think you've talked to her with quite a bit of a.
Yep, I, I, I did speak with the neighbor. She didn't submit any formal comment. She had questions about what a variance was and whether or not that would impact her property. I did encourage her to submit comment. She chose not to. We, we did not receive any.
And just, just for note here, I think my property, the distance between what I'm doing to her lot, to her side, is a little bit more than most of the neighbors do. So there's going to be even more clearance from her house to what I'm doing versus some of the other, like I think you were looking at, was it 46 or something like that? They just put the addition in the garage? They're like right on their line, I would, I think. Right about in the driveway right there, so I mean, it's.
Ideally, I'm sharing the wrong thing. Ideally, you know, any variance that is granted, usually through the zoning process, it would be verified with a survey inside or pinned.
Yeah.
So that way it doesn't, you know, create.
Right.
A greater encroachment than needed. Let me see. I want to see if I can share satellite image here. Bear with me. So that's the neighbor in question on the right here. I don't know if we have an image. Connecticut, we've gotten a bunch of new fun map tools. But they might not, here we go. It might not load. There we go. So this is the, a 2023 statewide aerial image from Connecticut Echo showing the patio area. That tree was cut down, right? There was a tree, I think, in this area. And then the side there. Now, one item that did come up in staff review, and I think it's just something that it's not subject to the variance, but I had, a board member did reach out to me in regards to it. And we can discuss outside of the hearing process, is some encroachment to the north. That is town property. So that's a separate issue. We will deal with that separately. But I know one of the board members did pass that along as a question in review. I've asked the board, not necessarily to, or I'm asking the board now. It's not necessarily part of the project. There's been no formal action taken from the town. But this is, we're, we're dealing with the hardship request here, not anything with the north. One, one item, so that the, this paved area would be an area that we would consider lot coverage. It is lot coverage that generally does exist. It counts towards lot coverage. Staff did go through and calculate the existing lot coverage of all, of the whole property as a whole. Regardless of if there is an conservation easement or not on the property, you calculate the tire property and all the areas that essentially don't wa, allow water to pass through. Structures, concrete, driveway areas that are like millings and stuff tend to allow the water to go through. So we gravel drive, driveways, loose millings, driveways don't get counted, but paved ones were. The, with the requested addition, that would not require a additional variance for lot coverage.
Okay, I do have another question. You said that you couldn't use the garage because it would be difficult to hook the water and sewer there. Why is it easier to do it in a separate building farther away?
What do you mean separate building?
Well, you want to build a building off of the, what, the building that, that you want to build is going to be on the other side of the garage. So why is it easier to get water and sewer there than it would be to the garage?
Well, I would have, the thing I'm proposing is attached to the house. And my septic and sewer comes right out the front there and I have an artesian well and I'd be able to tie right into the well and everything there. There's no water or anything in the garage. And in order to get, cause there's a patio there between the house and the garage, I'd have to dig everything up. And I couldn't even put a foundation in back there. I had to do a, you know, monolithic slab for the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Bill, any comments?
Uh, no, I don't have any.
Anything, Jared? No. So the retaining wall would come out, it would be a foundation wall with drainage?
Yeah. I tie right into my footing drain and all that stuff from the house. Continue that right over.
Do we have a motion to close application 24-842?
I would just ask if there's any other public comment.
Sorry. No one on the phone?
I don't believe there's anybody else online.
Anybody here tonight have any comments?
Nope.
Do we have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing in application 24-842.
Second.
I'll second.
Jonathan, we're going to do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Lynn La Verge?
Yes.
Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Bill Mangi?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
That just closes the public hearing for that application.
Onto application 24-843 of Randy Smith. To vary the town of Killenley zoning regulations 450 dimensional requirements. Table A minimum front setback from 40 feet to 38 feet for a single-family home with attached garage at 41 High View Drive on the GIS map 156, lot 13, LD zone.
I do, I don't think, I don't think 38 is the correct number. Okay. I think it's 40 to 32.
Oh, 40 to 32. Yep.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Paul Archer with Archer Survey and representing Randy Smith Pyramid Builders. Randy purchased a couple lots at the end of Zadora Heights that are existing lots of record. And as you can see, the existing lots of records are non-conforming lots as they sit now, okay? And the other intriguing part of, of the lots at the end deals with a cul-de-sac. It's not a straight line. It's an arc coming around. So one of the, one of the dilemmas we had dealing with this is we proposed a lot and got it to the health department. And that, one of the big problems we had is the health department, we gave it to you, gave us not necessarily a denial letter, but we had to redo it due to the fact that one of the state health code regulations is you have to be 25 feet off the down gradient property line for your septic system and your reserve system. So what that does is that really compresses the lot area that we have to work with. So if we go 25 feet off the down gradient to here, then we have a reserve system, a septic system, which is roughly 10 feet. Then from the septic system to the house has to be 25 feet away from the footing drains that were going in the ground. And so that keeps pushing the whole lot and keeps compressing the lot to where there isn't enough room really to place a house there. We did the best we could in placing the house here. And the only thing that really wasn't available to get in was the little front porch here. The problem, the front porch is part of, it's not a normal front porch. It's got the wood coming off the rafters and all, it's a covered front porch, part of the house. So due, due to the fact that the lot is a non-conforming entity as it sits now, due to the fact that the lot is on the end of a cul-de-sac and due to the fact that the health department requirements have changed greatly since when this lot was first adopted, it has compressed the area in which we have to put, the buildable area to put a house. If we were able basically on a normal lot to go like corner to corner, we, we would, and put a straight line, we would have no problem. But since we got, since the arc comes in, really makes it very difficult, as you can see this, how to put a square box onto the house. So that's why we're here asking for an eight-foot variance, basically from 40 to 32 to put the front porch on there. The main house will be within the normal setbacks, but the front porch fortunately has to go within. That's why we're asking for a variance. And, and the little colored map I gave you, you can see the difference between, the blue line is what is the current setback now and the green line is the front setback that we're requesting.
One, one element that's shown in the packet, there's floor plans as part of the design. You'll note that the garage in the, is shown in the front. That's a modification that was made to the plan to make it, in theory, accommodate the zoning and not seek a larger variance.
So this garage here
Oh, by moving it to the side?
was in the front here. So instead of requesting a larger, we've decided to put it onto the side of the house.
So same as the other applications, there's a, a staff report with a summary. Mr. Archer, I think, covered all, all the elements. One, scrivener's errors, I did, I, I did put a denial letter, but apparently it was not necessarily a denial.
It's a clarification. I don't want, know what it's called. It's not, they didn't deny it. They wanted it to come back with a modification to make that so the down gradient is 25 feet. It's not that the septic system was designed wrong, didn't meet the public health code because it didn't have 25 feet down gradient.
Okay. Any comment from the board?
And you said that was a non-conforming lot?
Right now it is, because if you look up here, it's in the LD zone, okay? And right now, in the LD zone, you're supposed to have 30,000 square feet. The existing lot is only 17,000 square feet. Okay, so the lots back then were small, I mean, we're supposed to have required 100-foot of frontage. We only have 60 feet of frontage. So the lot was, is a non-conforming lot as it sits in the LD zone now.
Thank you.
You'll note, there's a photo. Again, the chair had asked, you know, for photos, so I went out and took photos. You'll, you'll note that the lot is already cleared. Part of the reason it is already cleared is originally a zoning permit was issued for the project because the proposed, you know, structure was conforming. That being said, because the health department comes next typically, the health department and the surveyor found site constraints. And that's why essentially they're coming back for variance because moving it forward would require that. It, it could not be built on top of the subject.
Bill, any comment on the phone?
No, I don't have any.
Anybody on the phone for comment from the public?
We, we've received no official comment on the application. Last month, as many of you were aware, we didn't have a quorum. We did have a few young ladies who stopped in and asked about the project in general. They were concerned, they're concerned or were intrigued whether or not this included a road, the Chicken Farm Road essentially out of Zadora Heights. That is not part of the project. So, and this is just for a single-family home.
There's no comment here from anybody in the public? Nope. Okay. Anything else you want to add, Paul, or you also?
I'm all set. There's no one for the questions.
Do we have a motion to close the application?
I'll make motion to close the public hearing in application 24-843.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Joe, can we do a roll call vote? Joan, can we do a roll call vote? John was doing a good job.
I tried my best.
Oh. Good job, John.
I got ya, I got ya. Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynla Birch?
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
And Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion passes, that's to close the public hearing.
Onto Article Five, unfinished business. We're gonna open back up application two four eight four zero of Simone and Janet Morent was to vary the bone, Board of the Borough of Danielson zoning regulation five thirty point two point three, minimum sideback for a driveway from ten feet to zero feet at fifty-four Mechanic Street, GIS map one eighty-one, lot one oh one, in a RHD zone.
Bill Mengi, I'll make a motion to approve application two four dash eight four zero. Pretty much based on the hardship that the home being built in nineteen hundred, that was pre-existing to probably any vehicles in that time, in that area. So the property was never built to house any of those vehicles, and obviously there's very minimal location as to where they could place another driveway, so.
Do we have a second?
Jared Pichi, I'll second that.
And we'll have a roll call vote?
Discussion, if you could, Mr. Chair.
Okay, what I would add also is that, I mean, this had nothing to do with the owner. And, and we're not conferring any special privilege on this owner that I think other people don't already have on Mechanic Street.
Any more discussion? We'll take an action vote?
Roll call?
Roll call, you got it.
Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynla Birch?
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
And Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so bear with me one second.
Yep, your turn.
Yep, just to summarize, so the variance was approved. So that means that they will be a legal ad placed in the North Bulletin, most likely at the beginning of the week. That triggers a fifteen-day appeal period. Towards the end of that appeal period, you're gonna get an approval letter from me. We ask that you record that approval letter with the town clerk, there'll be instructions. And effectively, that variance then runs with the property. Then at any point in time, if you are looking to get the driveway in, you would go to our engineering department. Our engineering department will work with you for the curb cut and to make sure that the construction of the driveway conforms as best as they can, considering you do have a variance now.
Onto unfinished business, application two four eight four one of Mark and Nadine Akey to vary the town of Killenley zoning regulations, four fifty dimensional requirements on table A, a minimum side setback from twenty-five feet to four and a half feet for a twenty-four by twenty-four detached garage, one oh seven Shippey Schoolhouse Road, GIS map one ninety, lot four, in a RD zone. Review?
So, just to clarify for everyone, we'd be looking for a motion, so that way you can start discussion.
Bill Mengi, I'll make a motion to approve application two four dash eight four one. Hardship being septic tank location, obviously in the front of the well, but it's next to the road. The only other place I could see it, like you said, going south past the solar panels, but it makes sense to have it at the end of the T drive way. My personal opinion, but I make a motion to approve that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for the sake of discussion. Since the other side isn't going to be used for a vehicle, they're looking for their snow blower and that, I'd like to see the width reduced by four feet and have it at twenty by twenty-four.
Any discussion on that, Bill? So that would make it an eight and a half? Eight and a half foot setback?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Lynn.
Okay. That was just us talking, right? Just the board?
It is generally just the board during this portion of the, because the public hearing is closed and we're dealing with unfinished business, right? So, the applicant doesn't speak at this time, really only staff speaks for clarity. So, in for clarity purposes, so the motion on the table is to approve, generally as submitted.
So I have to, I have to make another, another motion to amend the original motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make an, a motion to amend the original motion to change the size of the building to twenty by twenty-four and to, that would make the setback eight point five feet.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Again, for clarity, we are just voting on the amendment at this time.
Did you hear that, Bill?
Yeah, I hear you, yeah.
Ready? Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynla Birch?
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
And Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion carries on the amendment.
Now, do we have a motion to approve said amendment?
Yeah, a motion to approve the application as amended.
You said it better than me.
Got ya.
Oh, you ready for a roll call? Okay. Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynla Birch?
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
And Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion to approve as amended carries unanimously.
Do you have to say anything?
Again, Mark and Nadine, I know you were both on the line. The variance was approved, but the board did modify it. So it is for a slightly smaller footprint. If you'd like, we can discuss that outside the meeting, you can give me a call even tomorrow, we could meet next week. But it's the same general process. The approval will get recorded with the town, or with the, in the North Bulletin, sometime beginning of next week. That will trigger a fifteen-day appeal period. And assuming the appeal period passes with no appeal, the, there will be an approval letter sent to you. You would record said approval level letter with the town clerk. And at that point, you could start applying for zoning permit, simple zoning permit, building permit, and with the Northeast District Department of Health for your garage.
Onto application two-
Thank you.
Onto application two four eight four two of William Casey to vary the town of Killenley zoning regulations, four fifty dimensional requirements, table A, minimum side setback from twenty feet to five feet for a twenty by thirty-two addition, an in-law apartment at fifty-eight Pleasant View Drive on the GIS map fifty-four, lot twenty-two, in a LD zone. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-four dash eight four two.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Discussion.
Discussion. Any discussion today?
So. The, it, from the sounds and things, that was the only place that would make sense to put the building on that property. And it isn't anything that the owner did, it's the way the, you know, property lines are and the way that whole little village was set up, where you don't have as much footage as you would usually.
Bill, did you have any discussion?
I don't.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I would say that, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's not uncommon in the areas, and there were other instances as well, it's not.
This is a less side back than another one, right? Wait four foot on another one up there?
Again, Andrew, just if you can, speak into the mic.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything to add to this.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynla Birch?
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
So, Bill, same thing as the other ones. It's gonna get posted in the North Bulletin at some point early next week. That will trigger a appeal period after the close of the appeal period, assuming there is no appeal. The, you would be able to file your decision letter, that will have the instructions on it from staff with the town clerk, at the which point you can start your application with zoning, building, and health department if they're needed. I think you mentioned you had a well, so it would be. Yeah, that's pretty much it. And then we'll have a discussion next week, I think, in regards to as well, other items.
Onto application two four eight four three of Randy Smith to vary the town of Killenley zoning regulations, four fifty dimensional requirement, table A, minimum front setback from forty to thirty-two feet for a single-family home with attached garage at forty-one High View Drive on the GIS map one fifty-six, lot thirteen, in a LD zone.
I'll make a motion to approve number two four dash eight four three, Randy Smith Pyramid Builders.
I'll second, and the reason why I'm seconding is because it is a non-conforming lot. The owner had nothing to do with the shape of the lot, and we aren't conferring anything upon that application that other people in the area don't have.
The only question I was looking at this, is there like stairs in front of here? Is that why it's such a setback of to thirty-two, the eight feet? Because looking at the green line, there's, looks like there's like a few footage in there for the setback to be less.
Again, without introducing anything new, that is the front landing area, which would consist of a landing area and stairs.
Okay. Perfect. Any other discussion?
Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynla Birch?
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Onto Article, oh, sorry, John, you gotta say something?
No, Paul knows, Paul knows the drill. Yeah, it's the same as the other ones, yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Onto Article Six, new business.
There is none.
Okay. Onto Article Seven, adoption of minutes. I was not at that meeting, so do you want to take over, Lynn? Okay. We have a mission, a motion to accept the minutes from July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting.
Bill Mengi, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
Does that need a roll call vote?
Ideally, yes, because we have a member that's remote.
Okay.
Jared Pichi?
Yes.
Lynla Birch?
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Also, onto Article Eight, correspondence to the board.
I have no separate correspondence generally. I think we might have touched on it last month about the sewer moratorium. That is in effect. That may lead to applications before us. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it is, it is a thing right now with the town that we can't have new connections to the sewer. Quite simply, anyone who is submitting an application for anything that would require a new sewer connection or a perceived increase to flow, say a renovation on an existing one, needs to go to the WPCA and get their approval. Our board, because we're talking about ordinance and health code items, our board isn't the one to see a variance for something like that. But I'm, I'm not sure if an application might, because of location or, or some other reason, come before us because of it, so just to make you all aware. And we do have a council liaison tonight.
All of my notes are at home, so I will try to remember from our meeting. Mary gave us a crime statistics report from the state of Connecticut for twenty twenty-two for Killenley. There were some people that had asked for specifics about that, and she will have a, an address of email address or web address, because it can be accessed on the internet, but I don't have, it's on my email. On the Westfield Avenue, ARPA funding is going to be used to offset the bonding. I believe it's like one point six million, it may be a little bit more. Whatever is left over from the ARPA funding has to be designated by the end of December. That was already planned by the town council to, so to offset any tax increases, to use the ARPA funding. We've designated two million dollars to the WPCA for design for expansion. The money was from the power plant, the, we finally have an agreement, and so that's the money from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year that will cover that cost. Killenley was denied a, a grant for expansion. They wanted to see some input from the town. And the municipalities that did receive funding is because they had shovel-ready projects. So we're gonna be working on a design concept. The Owen Bell dredging project is complete, it's about three to four weeks ahead of schedule. And it looks like most of the turtles have returned to the area. And most of the, what they dredge was pretty dry, so they didn't even have to put it onto the soccer field to have the water removed. So they were able to get it off-site quickly. And the constabulary moved into the Soap Street Building, so that's where their new offices are. And that's what I remember from our meeting. Anybody have any questions?
The two million dollars for Westfield, is that for the regulation department moving to the?
Westfield Avenue, that is the renovation project. It's the Board of Education offices, it's for the rec.
So it is for the rec department moving in over there?
Yeah, it's, so it's a combination, and it's also redoing the facade, the brickwork, windows, roof.
Oh, so the whole thing?
Yeah, so it's-
I knew about, you know, Sisop.
So that'll offset, so that'll offset the cost of it.
Okay, good. And some of that, I'm sorry, Tammy told us last night in my borough council meeting.
How's the Reynolds Street project coming?
So the Reynolds Street project is- So the Reynolds Street project is coming well, it's, the, the town workers will be getting, getting it ready, and then it will be paved by, I believe by an outside, all Reynolds Street will be paved by an outside-
Yeah, I think Tammy said something about the water department still had, or-
They were doing something.
Yeah, that Connecticut Water still had something to do for, it could be paved, but at least it looks a lot better. Now, the church needs as the stairs put in.
So they worked together with Westfield Congregational Church as a combined project because the church's retaining wall and the retaining wall for Reynolds Street kind of interconnected, so they were very cooperative.
And then they had that rotten post that had to be taken care of before-
Oh, the wood, yeah.
And also the sewer runs underneath the church, so everything. And it is, it is one-way, and it's going to run from Main Street to Broad, opposite of the street next to it, which runs into Main Street.
Thank you. Article ten, adjournment, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, or just an adjournment vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill Mengi?
Yes.
And Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill.